Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December the 12th, 2023. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very pleased to have with us today Ms. Kim Erwin, who's the Executive Director of the Brazos Pregnancy Clinic, to give us the invocation. She's been here many times, and we welcome you again.
Thank you. Mighty God, King of the universe, we thank you for this day, Lord God. As we enter the sixth day of Hanukkah and are reminded of the miracles that you will perform, we ask that you watch over this Commissioner's Court, Lord Jesus, that you instill on each and every one your mercy and your kindness and your grace, your discernment for the decisions that they need to make, for your grace for each person that is in this building today, Lord God, that they hear with an open heart and an open mind, and a heart full of what you want them to do and a discernment of what you have them do. Please watch over each and every one of them as they go through this day, for their families. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now pledge the great state of Texas. On your Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Okay. Okay, Ms. Wilber, there are no special presentation, no service awards today, okay? So that brings us to our next item, which are the citizens' comments at large or the open mic. I remind everybody that if you want to speak on anything, you must fill out a public participation form, hand it to the sheriff. The sheriff will give it to Ms. Lang. Ms. Lang will number it and give it to me. So we have three speakers that are lined up to speak on open mic today. And the first person is, I don't know who this person is, but it says Becky Kidd. Does anybody recognize Becky Kidd?
I didn't prepare a speech because it would have probably gone on for days, and this court's going to go on for days as it is. So, uh, thank you for 25 years. It has been the best 25 years of my life. I've met and worked with some of the most wonderful people in the world. There are a few people I'd probably sell on eBay, but I'll let them remain nameless. But for the most part, this has been a fabulous job, and I cannot thank you enough for allowing me to be here and help the community in the ways that I've been able to. And the last thing I want to do is I want to bring up the lovely people that I have been blessed to work with for the last few years. And I'd like for Melissa to take a picture of us, if y'all don't mind.
Okay.
And that's all. See? Short and sweet.
Okay, short and sweet.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
I would like to add that Becky Kidd has done an excellent job for this county and it left the financial state of this county in excellent, excellent shape. We've paid all of our debts off quickly. We have the best financial rating. We can borrow money. We can do everything because of the good stewardship of Becky Kidd. It's been an honor to work with her. And she tells me that the replacement here, Ms. Stephanie Matlock, is, she has a lot of faith and confidence in her, has said a lot of good things about you, and we all look forward to working with you. So, welcome aboard. So, this is a good continuation of a very good thing. So, thank the audit department very much. We all do. Okay, the next speaker is Tina Brown.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I was truly hoping that this agenda and the next one would be about wrapping up the end-of-the-year stuff, uh, but it looks like it's going to be another marathon session. I truly look forward to the day when this court has nothing controversial that I feel the need to speak on. You take great pride in allowing us the opportunities to speak on agenda and non-agenda items at every court. And I use the word "allow" because really and truly, it's just empty words. From the very first meeting this year until the very last meeting, the three of you, Kevin, Nanette, and Dave, have continually ignored the citizens that have come before you. And it's not easy for citizens to come up here, for a lot of them. A lot of them, it's hard to speak in front of you. A lot of them, it's hard to even get off work. The first meeting of this year was about the Upper Trinity Water Board and undoing what the previous court had done, and many people spoke against that. And of course, the last court was about the ARPA funds, and there have been many in between. Today, you have item number four about the remainder of that ARPA money. I'm not even going to bother signing up or speaking about it because I know the three of you don't care and you aren't listening. You have already made up your minds, and it doesn't matter what anyone has to say up here. You will be voting for it. You don't have to be a mind reader to know what my thoughts are on, my thoughts are on that. I'd like to see you remove items 14, 15, and 16, since they are really only on here so Dave can grandstand. I don't think the Commissioner's Court is a place for a lesson on these things Dave wants to discuss. I will say that TAC and the Texas statute both include the support of paupers by the Commissioner's Court. You will find that in Government Code Section 81 dot 027. I'd also like to see you remove items 20 and 21, since I'm pretty sure they are only, they are about the incident at the last hospital board meeting. So again, they are on here so Dave can grandstand because they are not county business either. I'm pretty sure the Commissioner's Court is not the correct place to discuss that or the unprofessional behavior of two of our Commissioners at that hospital board meeting. Lastly, I'd like to wish you all and everyone in here a very Merry Christmas and a better New Year. Some of us may not be here next week, or at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Elizabeth Mercer.
So I'm here simply because I actually owe you, Mrs. Lang, this particular comment because I've been remiss, I've also been really busy with my personal life, so I haven't had an opportunity to respond. We've been, when I first made my first comment, when I first started looking at the budget, one of the things I commented on was a dollar amount, not because I care about you one way or the other, because ma'am, I don't even know you, but because I was looking at the money. So, I finally had the opportunity to do that. What I have here is that the total conversion was $22,885 because you delayed it. The funding for the employee, who really should have been doing their job routinely, was $15,500 with a total of $279, $745,000 that you cost the county that really there is no excuse for. All you had to do was do your job. Then you add in your salary, and because I have 40 years of a corporate background, I can absolutely tell you that when you are responsible for funding or for new programs, and by the way, as an aside, I have never worked anywhere where you got a whole year to learn a program. I mean, it's just, if you couldn't do it, you were fired. But with that said, government protects their employees. So if you add in your salary and you add in the funds that you cost the county when you refuse to do your job by issuing marriage licenses, which while you may disagree personally, were still a matter of law, and you add in the funds of that, the back of the envelope figure was about $400,000. So, if I'm off a little bit, I apologize. But I also want to apologize for the delay because I should have responded to you earlier. The last time you and I had any kind of a conversation at all, it was an aside, I was speaking to a different person right over there, asking questions about septic systems and how everything worked, and you made a snide comment about, "Ooh, I didn't come to your office and talk to you." And you're right, I didn't. This is me responding to you now, and again, my apologies for the delay. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes all of the comments at large. And so we'll next go into, and like I'm going to remind you again, I saw some late people come in, that if you want to speak on any agenda item, you must prepare a public participation form and hand it to the sheriff. The sheriff will give it to Ms. Lang, and Ms. Lang will number it and give it to me. Okay? So, all right, so this brings us into the miscellaneous business to be discussed, and item number one is to convene into executive session to consult with the attorney pursuant to Government Code 55, 551.071 regarding a notice of right to file a civil action. So at this time, at 9:12, we will convene into executive session. So, Mr. Mills, is he here?
Detention here.
Remind you, yes, I'll read it.
Okay.
Judge, do we need to unconvene? I thought you convened into an ex, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Go ahead.
Well, we haven't left, so we haven't convened.
You're right. You're right. I'm sorry.
We're still in Commissioner's Court here. So, did you find him, Sheriff?
He's in court over here, so they're just about done on that.
Okay. Well, we're going to go ahead and take item number two. Here, we're still in, so it concerns you, Sheriff. So, item number two is to discuss and take appropriate action to purchase six Tahos fully rigged for the Sheriff's Office Patrol Unit. These six vehicles will replace older vehicles that will cascade into other services. I wonder who thought of that word. I like that word, though, cascade. The purchase was anticipated in the 2023-2024 budget in capital outlay fund 55, expense not to exceed $588,000. So the sheriff, you got your trusted assistant up here, please explain this to us. Harry, good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us today. Um, I pretty much have broken everything down of all the equipment that's needed for the Tahos and the six Tahos that I'm asking for. Is there any questions that you have of me?
I don't. I think this has been discussed and planned for, hasn't it? I think it has, Sheriff. You agree that you need those six vehicles, don't you?
Yeah, as many miles as we put on, on the road, yeah, please, um, help us out and get these, let us get these on order. So, the way Denise has got this, she has added everything into there with cameras, graphics, radar, uh, radios, everything, and the rigging up of them, and so everything complete is So, and your packets were mailed to you. Do you have that? Do you need another one?
Okay.
The judge.
Yep. We have a, we have, we have a. I think that's it.
All right.
Any other discussion?
No, I just want to thank Denise for, um, working with me and providing me with all the backup material and answering all my questions. And so at this time, I'll make the motion to purchase six Tahos fully rigged for the Sheriff's Office Patrol Unit. These six vehicles will replace older vehicles that will cascade into other service. This purchase was anticipated in the 2023-24 budget in capital outlay, and I have the expense not to exceed $588,000, just to give a little bit of a buffer in case something changes because it's going to take a couple, a couple of years to get these vehicles.
Well, I hope not. I hope just a year, okay?
Good.
But I'm hoping I have everything, um, but I am human, so just in case, I appreciate the little buffer that you've given us.
What is the total cost then, not to exceed what?
$588,000.
$588, like it is in here? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Okay, I hear second. All right, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to purchase six Tahos fully rigged for the Sheriff's Office. Uh, the purchase has been made and anticipated in 2023-24 budget in capital outlay fund 55, expense not to exceed $588,000, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you very much for all your work, okay?
Yes, thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Now, uh, Mr. Mills, we will now at 9:17 convene into executive session to discuss with the county attorney their notice of right to file a civil action. So, Mr. Mills, at this time, we will take a brief recess to go into executive session. Now, 9:32, and we are reconvened back into Commissioner's Court. And we're at item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the care coordination agreement between Pecan Valley Centers and Hood County Jail. And Eric Terberville.
And we have representatives from Pecan Valley here. If you got any real questions about anything you did, yep, they're here.
Okay.
So, this is a new program, um, that's just coming online. We're just, um, after discussion back and forth, then, um, we're willing to get involved in it. Dave, I guess I will let you handle this so I don't mess anything up.
Where is Coke Beatty?
He couldn't make it this morning.
Okay, so he sent you in instead, huh?
Just missed it, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. Well, we like Coke Beatty a lot. He and the Pecan Valley and Hood County have had a good working relationship for many, many years, and we'd like to continue that. So, what can you tell us about this new care coordination agreement?
Yeah, so this is for the 46B individuals that are deemed incompetent to stand trial and are sent to North Texas or a state hospital for competency. Once they return and have been deemed competent, then, um, we can reimburse for medications, labs, and provider appointments up to 90 days.
Okay. So.
Hopefully that'll give them enough time to get them into court and get them on down whatever direction they're supposed to go.
Okay. Good deal. Anybody have any other questions or comments to these fine people here? And if not, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we allow the county judge to sign the care coordination agreement between Pecan Valley Centers and Hood County Jail.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the county judge to sign the care coordination agreement between Pecan Valley Centers and Hood County Jail, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank Pecan Valley very much for all y'all do. Okay. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to approve funding the 25% generator grant match needed for 15 EMS and volunteer fire department generators using the $119,494 of ARPA grant fund with any remaining match to be funded out of Fund 55. Fund 55 expense not to exceed $11,000. Ms. Margaret Campbell.
Yes, I was going to introduce what's, what this is all about. So, before I get into the details, I just want to let everyone know that I heard from Margaret yesterday, and the number's actually 13 generators instead of 15 that are on the agenda. And as we heard during our multiple workshops, um, the need for generators was made apparent, especially during winter storm Yuri in 2021. Several of our EMS and fire stations had to operate with the bay doors open, which put the trucks and the equipment at risk of freezing. Water inside the pumps was at risk and could freeze. Some, um, volunteer fire departments actually brought heaters from their homes to try to keep the temperature in the bays at least 32 degrees so that the equipment wouldn't freeze. So thanks to our resourceful grant writer and our emergency management director, they found a grant specifically for generators for first responders. It does require a 25% match, and from the best estimates that we have, it looks to be somewhere, and maybe Margaret will update us on this today, but somewhere between 400 and 500,000 for all of the generators. So the funds that are in the ARPA account would cover 25% match up to $480,000 and $500 for all of, oh, sorry, and allowing up to 11,000 from capital would allow a 25% match for a total of 525,000 if it were to go up that high. So that's where we are now, and so I'll turn it over to Margaret to get us up, up to date.
Yes, I don't have updated numbers yet. I've reached out to a couple of people that we have requested information from, but the grant requires so much information on each generator. It took us a while to compile all that, and they have not gotten back with me on numbers yet. But by my estimate, I think that you're probably pretty close.
So this is the last of the ARPA money? Right. So it's all been done, and so these are the generators that we've been talking about for the fire departments for forever on the deal. So, I think y'all did a great job of finding the grant money that will get them, and so this will, I think this is something that's needed to do.
I want to point out too, this also includes the EMS facilities. So it'll include Pecan EMS, Texas EMS, including the new stations that are going to be built as well.
So how many generators are there? We were talking about 13 or 15?
13 total.
13, and that includes EMS along with the volunteer fire departments.
Correct.
So everybody will have a generator. We talked about in previous Commissioner's Court that there were different needs, different sizes, different electrical hookups, et cetera. So we're going to let the various fire departments and EMS work that out with the grants and stuff with your department.
Correct.
How about that?
Yes, as well as whatever the contractors recommend, because since they do it all the time, they know what loads are required.
Exactly. Okay. That's good.
Do we have any lead times on what the, for lead times of the equipment? Do we have current, you know, pricing?
We don't have current pricing yet. I've reached out to two different vendors, and I have not heard back from them yet. And as soon as I hear back on pricing, my next question will be what the lead time will be.
All right. Good deal. Any further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
All right, with that, I'll make the motion to approve funding 25%, the 25% grant for the, the 25% generator grant match needed for 13 EMS and volunteer fire department generators using $119,494 of ARPA grant fund, which will, with the remaining match funded from Fund 55.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have a couple of citizens.
Oh!
That, uh, wanted to speak.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Rob Taylor is Ray Taylor.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for letting me take a minute of your time. I represent the Complantation Fire and EMS. Uh, but this has more to do for the whole county than just for us. The whole county in order to keep operating in emergency services, we need these generators just for the reasons spoken before, um, to keep everybody operational. During the storm, our ambulance sat outside for a week running, just so they wouldn't freeze.
Running, did you say?
Running. We had to leave them outside. We couldn't get our bay doors open and closed. So, this, that's one, that's the reason right there we need them for the whole county. So, I just wanted to say thank you and...
Thank you. Okay, Harry Glanick. Number four, generators.
I have, no, I think later, I think 14 or something.
Well, you got four. Did you mean 14?
Well, yes, 14.
You want me to put a one in front of it? I'll put 14. Okay.
All right.
All right. So that concludes the open comments.
All right, I'll restate the motion. Make the motion to approve funding the 25% generator grant match needed for 13 EMS and volunteer fire department generators using $119,494 of ARPA grant fund with any remaining match to be funded out of Fund 55. Fund 55 expense not to exceed $11,000.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the funding, the 25% generator grant match needed for the 13 EMS and volunteer fire department generators using the $119,494 of the remaining ARPA grant fund with any remaining match to be funded out of Fund 55. Fund 55 expense not to exceed $11,000, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Item number five, convene into executive session to discuss maintenance director position applications pursuant to section 551.074. So at this time, that I see Mr. Jay Riley here, who's very important here, we're going to...
Judge, um, just, I put this on here before I saw the length of the agenda, and based on the number of items on the agenda, and with respect for the public's time here today, I suggest that we pull, uh, five and either do it in a special meeting or in another date.
Good, thank you. I'll do that. We'll get your expert advice at a future date, Mr. Jay Riley, okay? You also can reconsider and pull your resignation and come back to work if you would like. Decline? All right. Okay. Then moving on, this is item number six, approve request for a price increase from $349,000, $349.99 to $527.04 on transmission fluid and filter charges for 2021 and newer Chevy Tahos on Midas's RFP 2021-002 oil and transmission services contract. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So Midas is requesting a 51% price increase on this one service. They've provided documentation of an 85% increase in labor time and 27% increase in parts for the newer Tahos transmission service versus the older models. So I'd like to recommend that this change be approved.
Okay. That's really nothing we can do about it. It's a requirement the GM has required, right?
Yeah, they went from a six-speed transmission to a 10-speed in 2021, which is when this contract originated. So, the vendor had no idea at that time that this would...
Well, this is only fair.
...be necessary.
Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the price increase from $349, $349.99 to $527.04 on transmission fluid and filter changes for 2021 and newer Chevy Tahos by, on Midas RFP 2021-002 oil and transmission services contract.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the price increase from $349.99 to $527.04 on the transmission and filter changes on 2021 and newer Chevys on the Midas RFP 2021-002 oil and transmission services, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Okay, next one, approve request for the county judge to sign the Bonfire Software Order for the budgeted contract management software, as well as approve a policy that all future contracts and agreements be sent to purchasing for entry into the software. Glenn, Mr. Tillman.
Yes, so, so one challenge that the county faces every day is locating contracts, agreements, and interlocals in a timely manner, as well as receiving adequate notice of renewals and contract expirations. And so after months of research, I'd like to move forward with the Bonfire Contract Management Software, as it's the most cost-effective package that meets all of our needs. The funds have already been budgeted in the IT budget, and, uh, this, this software package actually integrates with our current bidding... actually integrates with our current bidding platform, which is a bonus for us. But to make it work, we need all the, the departments in the county to send us any new contract or agreement for us to enter into the system. And it's, it's, so therefore the need for the, for the policy. But it's, it's, it's really a great package in that it will email the departments, department heads, in advance of any expirations, so they can take action in a timely manner. So, you know, hopefully we don't have a last-second emergency when these things expire. So I think it'd be a great step for the county, and I request your approval.
Okay. Drew, does Drew and Owen agree with you on this?
Yes, we, we met and went over, went over the software.
Yes, real fast. I did meet with Glenn, and we did talk about it in depth, and yes, I completely agree and back Glenn.
Okay. Good deal. All right.
I just want to add a couple of comments, since I know that I've asked a lot of questions about this, and this isn't really important for any entity that deals with multiple contracts. Keeping up with the terms and conditions, as well as expirations and renewals, can be overwhelming. When a contract is automatically renewed without being reviewed, it, the county loses an opportunity to make adjustments that may improve the county's position. Knowing that a contract has expired will also protect the county from paying invoices against an expired contract. So I am in favor of this software and also the policy associated with it, and there have been a couple little tweaks. So the one that's shown here is, is not the one that Glenn sent us the other day with just a couple of word tweaks. So the policy is only as good as the compliance. So I would, with the best interests of the county at heart and the taxpayers, I would highly encourage the department heads and elected officials to bring contracts to the purchasing department after they've been approved in court and recorded by the clerk. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment? Do I hear a motion?
If I move that we approve the request for the county judge to sign the Bonfire Software Order for budgeted contract management software, as well as approve a policy that all future contracts and agreements be sent to purchasing for entry into the software.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the request for the county judge to sign the Bonfire Software for the budgeted contract management software, for all future contracts and agreement to be sent to purchasing for entry into the software system. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Okay. Item number eight, consider and take appropriate action to vote for members of the Board of Directors of the Hood Central Appraisal District for a two-year term to begin January the first, 2024. We had two applicants here, and one was Rod Littke, the other one was Greg Harrell. Greg Harrell has graciously withdrew his application. So we have one application here, and that's Rod Littke, although we can vote for anybody, is my understanding, that is running here. But we do have one speaker that signed up to speak, and that is Ron Sutton, who was on the Central Appraisal District Board. Right, Mr. Sutton?
That's correct, Judge. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the time to visit with you briefly this morning, and I want to thank y'all for supporting me two years ago to sit on the board as a director for the Hood County Central Appraisal District. It's because of that service that I have a hands-on perspective of what would make a great board member, and that's why I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Rod Littke. Rod is a rancher and farmer here in Hood County, and he has been for the past thirty years. As y'all know, you only need to live in the county for two years to serve on the board, so Rod's been here thirty years. He knows rural Hood County property values, and he's knowledgeable on mineral values in Hood County. He also owns residential property here in Granbury. All of Rod's real estate holdings are in Hood County. He's former president of the Texas Farm Bureau for Hood and Somerville Counties, where he oversaw various ag, ag projects and addressed issues specific to Hood County. Rod is owner-operator of Jericho Energy and has been since 2014, and he is registered with the state as a P-five producer based in Hood County. He manages gas wells production in Hood County. He understands mineral appraisal process, like projection price and projection production. Here's something very important that will be a great asset for Rod serving on the board. He has a strong financial background, and in any office of public service, a strong financial background is a true asset. He retired from PricewaterhouseCoopers as a partner. He was managing partner for Central U.S., for the central part of the United States over utilities. He's been involved in all aspects of business, finance, information technology, projects, mergers, acquisitions, and strategic projects. Here's another unique thing about Rod. He is CEO of Customer Service Week and has done that since 2012. He's served on that board for twenty-eight years. Rod's brother asked him, why in the world would you want to serve on the Board of Directors for the Central Appraisal District? And Rod said, because I want to give back to the community that has been so good to me and my family, and that's his reason. And I can remember my wife asking me the same question, and my answer was very similar, to give back. When you read through Rod's resume, the thing that jumps out that he has in common with each of you is a heart for service. I appreciate your support for Rod Littke to sit on the Board of Directors of the Central Appraisal District.
Good. Thank you. Is there any other comment or discussion?
Yeah, I've got something.
Okay.
Just want to do a, kind of a summary recap of what's going, has gone on with this HCAD issue and getting a, a new board on here. Granbury Independent School District has the majority of the voting power to put members on the board. And two or three weeks ago, they voted thusly. Rick Frye, they cast eight hundred and thirty-four votes for him, which put him on there, and he's an old member. Scott Bradley, they cast eight hundred and thirty-four votes for him, and he's a new member, and that automatically put him on there. And then Mark McDonald, who would be a new member, they cast eight hundred and thirty-four votes for him. The remaining votes that they had left was six hundred and seventy-five votes, which they cast for Eddie Rodriguez, who is a city council member and has been on the board the last term. The city council last week voted, they had three hundred and nineteen votes to add, so they cast all their votes for Mr. Rodriguez. So now he's on there. So there's only one, we had two candidates, Mr. Greg Harrell and we had Mr. Rod Littke, who I finally had the pleasure of meeting and visiting with last week, and was very impressed with Mr. Littke. And I went to city council when they had this for a vote, had to put this up for a vote, and I stood up for Mr. Littke at that point in time, urging them to vote for Mr. Littke, because their three hundred and nineteen votes for Mr. Littke would have given us a chance to put two people on the HCAD, Mr. Littke and Mr. Harrell. That was my goal. And I was trained to be an advocate for my client in law school, and my client, in my opinion, is the taxpayer. So I went to city council not to tell them what to do, but to urge them to vote for somebody that's not affiliated with the school district, because they already have three people on there. Mr. Rodriguez has a familial connection with the school district, and so frankly, the school district now has four members, as far as I can see. Nothing personal against Mr. Rodriguez. It's just, that's the way it is. I think I made somebody mad over there, maybe a couple of people, by going up there and saying what I said. I didn't talk down anybody or anything. I just advocated for Mr. Littke. And I am in full agreement with Mr. Ron Sutton on Mr. Littke. And Mr. Harrell was gracious enough to withdraw his candidacy for this position, which means we've only got one person to vote for, although I guess, as the judge said, I guess we could vote for anybody we wanted to. We have eleven hundred and eighty-nine votes. That's the, the Commissioners, the county has the second highest number of votes to put somebody on the HCAD board. Some of you may or may not know, but we've had some, some serious issues with the HCAD board over the last few months. Serious issues. And without, there's no sense going into it here and now, but we've, we need people to represent the taxing entities on that board, besides the school district. The school district has their majority, and they're going to get what they want. And my goal was to get a couple of people on there that will stand watch for us, the county, and the other taxing entities. Didn't work out that way. Mr. Rodriguez, in my opinion, it's an apparent conflict of interest for him to be on there, but that's, it's not an illegal. So, of course, they told me in law school, if it doesn't look good, you might not ought to do it, even if it is technically legal. But I am very happy that Mr. Harrell withdrew, because he's filed and run for the county chair for the Republican Party. So I appreciate that. And so unless there's anything else, I'll make a motion.
I do have a couple of things to say. So first, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Littke, Mr. Harrell, Mr. Frye, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Sutton for stepping up and being willing to serve, or in the case of Mr. Lewis, Mr. Sutton and Mr. Frye, in their case, for serving for the last two years and being willing to serve again. All of these gentlemen have outstanding resumes and would be excellent choices for the board. I am disappointed and concerned that the school district and the city council have failed to see the obvious conflict of interest by putting votes towards a sitting city council member, especially when there, there are well-qualified individuals that are willing to serve that present no conflict. As I mentioned in prior court, and again, shame on us, the taxing entities, if we didn't learn anything from what played out in the summer, spring and summer with the HCAD budget and the funds that were being held against the tax, Texas tax code. We had a sitting city council member acting as a H-Cor, HCAD board member stand right here at our podium and argue that it was perfectly okay to keep these funds in a fund balance. However, that is against the tax code. I have the tax code here. It's tax code six dot oh-six J, if you want to go and read it. I'm not going to read it now. Then a few days later, as a city council member, voted to reject the HCAD budget that he had presided over as president of HCAD. If that doesn't scream conflict, I don't know what does. Let me remind you that this dual role city council member had been on the HCAD board for eighteen months at that time. There's another example, just to go into the conflict that occurs when someone who is sitting on a taxing entity is also serving on the HCAD board. And this involves a member that was president of the school district as he presided over the formation of what was called a Texas Nonprofit Corporation to facilitate a real estate deal for the new appraisal building. As we learned, that land was owned by the school district. He also made the motion in 2021 to retain funds from the 2020 fiscal year excess budget of six hundred and five thousand dollars to put it into a land and building fund. This account was not in the 2021 budget, and as you know, retaining excess funds is against tax code. There's quite a bit more to this, but I'll just make it short and say that I bring this all up to demonstrate the conflict that this creates when someone that's sitting on a taxing entity is also selected to serve on, on the board of the appraisal district. We have well-qualified candidates and people that are willing to serve that present no conflict. Why continue to take this conflict forward? Again, I call on the city, sitting city council member to remove himself from consideration or step down. In closing, I do fully support Mr. Littke. Also talked to him, I'm the one who asked him to fill out his application and apply. He's very well-qualified, former partner of PWC. I worked with PWC a lot in my prior career, so very respected corporation and fully support Mr. Littke. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Well, I have something to say. I just don't think it's our duty as, sitting up here as an elected body on the commissioners' court, to tell another elected body here in Hood County, that is, the city council, how they should vote when they have their votes. It's not our business to go up there and tell them, just like I don't want the city coming down here and telling the county officials how we should vote on county issues. So I disagree with Commissioner Eagle and with Commissioner Samuelson about that. I'm going to vote, like I always do, for the best interest of Hood County, since I represent all of Hood County, not just people in one precinct. I'm going to do the best I can to get the best candidate always. Having said that, I do know Rod Littke goes to the same church that I do. I appreciate Ron Sutton, who was a great member on the appraisal board for his service for two years. It was a very interesting and significant two years. You did an outstanding job, and when he saw the resume, I think, of Rod Littke with his service, especially being able to appraise rural property, oil and gas, and then being a partner of Pricewaterhouse, that's really significant. So at that time, that's all I have to say. Do I, do I hear a motion?
I make the motion to allocate the votes that we have for the appraisal district board member to Rod Littke.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to allocate the one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven votes to Rod Littke for the Board of Directors of the Hood Central Appraisal District for a two-year term to begin January one, 2024. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got one, one little thing to add. You know, it is okay for us to disagree up here. It's really okay. The judge can disagree with me, that's fine, but I stand with what I did.
Any further comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. All the votes go to Mr. Rod Littke. Okay. That brings us to item number nine, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the January one, 2024, reappointment of Hood County Fire Marshal and approved bond in accordance of the government code three-five-two point...
in accordance with the government code 352.011. And we have one speaker on this. Mr. Matt Hohon. Mr. Hohon, are you here? There he is. Do you have any experience with fire departments?
Just a little. But it's just volunteer. It's a hobby.
He's the chief of the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department.
Judge, commissioners, thank you for the time. I just want to speak quickly in favor for Jeff Young. I've worked with Jeff directly for the last four years. The analogy that I like to give is Jeff's the master cat wrangler. And it truly is incredible what he has to work with, because you've got fat cats, you've got barn cats, you've got alley cats. And he manages to grab everyone, somehow or another, pull them together, and be able to accomplish not only on the public service and public safety side, but with the steps that the court is taking with helping with the subsidy and the ARPA funds. The, the help that it's been and the guidance and direction that he's offering is a unique concept. And it is hard to find that and replace it. And I would reference just previous experience with other fire marshals. It takes a unique person and a unique personality to be in that position. Again, I support Jeff. I appreciate his time, energy, and effort that he's given to my organization for the last four years. Thank you.
Any other comment or question? If not...
I would like to, just briefly, Jeff, Jeff has always done a great job. And I'll echo Mr. Hohon's sentiments with, you know, it is a pretty diverse bag that he's got to pull together and get everybody going in the right direction. He advocates very well for the fire departments and, and on behalf of the county as well. I think Jeff's doing a great job. So with that, I make a motion that we would authorize the reappointment. Hood County Fire Marshal Jeff Young, an approved bond in accordance with government code 32.011 for January 1, 2024.
Second.
That's 352.011.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to authorize the appointment, reappointment of Hood County Fire Marshal and approved bond in accordance with government code 352.011, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. So, did you, how did you vote, Commissioner Wilson? Did you?
Yea.
Yea? Okay. So that is four yays and one nay. So motion carries. All right, item number 10. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the resolution for the flock camera system. Sheriff, flock camera?
Good morning. This is just what I need to have signed so we can enter an agreement with Tech Dot so we can get the cameras placed on the Tech Dot, on the 377 and Glenrose Highway. Sorry.
Okay, this is it?
That's it.
Yeah, there's a series of things we have to accomplish with this. So you passed it two weeks ago to let us move forward, but then Tech Dot needs this. And then the last step is TCIC, NCIC, to pull it all together and send it off. So we're not there yet, but this is the last thing you guys got to approve. So it's just that you support us doing this with, with Tech Dot to put those in the right of way.
What I passed out, when what's showing up here is a little bit different than what you got in your packets originally. There was a sentence at the end of section two that stated the Hood County Commissioners Court further authorizes Hood County Sheriff or his designee to execute any associated documents necessary to consummate the business relationship. And that, after talking to Federico Hernandez from Tech Dot, that wording does not appear in their other contracts. And I've had multiple conversations with the sheriff and Sean, and we're all okay with taking that out. I think that any contracts should come back to court for you to sign, Judge. Any further contracts?
You're all right with this wording, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If we get more cameras, we'll just have to come back to get the contract amended, because to put more cameras out in different spots, Tech Dot has to prove them going on to that right of way. So the contract will have to be amended when we do that.
Okay. Okay, I was sitting here reading this. Did we already make a motion?
No. Do you want me to make the motion? Go ahead.
You got it. We did not make a motion?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution for the flock camera system?
I'll make the motion to allow the county judge to sign the resolution for a flock camera system.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow the county judge to sign the resolution for the flock camera system, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
Yes. We, when we put this on the table two weeks ago, I voted against it. And here are some reasons. Number one, we live in a surveillance state now. We are being watched everywhere. We are being followed with our phones. And I cannot be in favor of more.
Anything else?
What this has done for us and other law enforcement around the country is help us find missing people, find bad guys that are on the run. Lot of good has come out of that, but I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Eagle, so.
And I'd like to say something. My guys have rules set in place to keep that from happening. And if they break the rules, then there's repercussions for that. That's not going to happen. I guarantee that.
Any other comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries four one. Okay, item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the resolution to conduct a joint primary election on March 5, 2024. I see it was a typo error in here, Ms. Cooper? But we corrected that. And the, of course, the resolution is corrected too. But welcome.
So I think that one might, yeah, that one still has the March 4 date on it. But I have the updated March 5 that will get your signatures on it.
Okay.
But this is just so that we can conduct the primary with both parties at the same locations on March 5.
This is what we do ever since you've been here, right? And before that?
Yeah.
So you're all in favor of this. By the way, you did a great job on the last election. You've had two big elections since you've been in office, haven't you?
I've had a lot.
You've had a lot.
I've seen a lot of smaller ones, but two big ones. You're gearing up for this one, aren't you?
Yeah. And that's why the typo, because we have a May 4 election next year. So I was thinking May 4, March 5.
Okay.
It's all intertwined at this point.
Always looking ahead. Well, good. You're doing a good job. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make motion to approve the resolution to conduct a joint primary election on March 5, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the resolution to conduct a joint primary election on March 5, 2024, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. You want to hand that to me and I'll get it signed? Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. All right, that brings us to item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the revised spectrum service agreement. IT, Mr. Owen.
Good morning, judges and commissioners. This is pretty much the same contract that we approved last week. There are some minor changes. Mostly, the biggest thing we're looking at is about $250 or so cheaper than the last one. Essentially, Spectrum just kind of messed up how they had our building structured and all that. So it was no good on their end, the contract. So we're just here to re-sign it now that it's been corrected.
Good. Any other question or comment? If not, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we allow the county judge to sign the revised spectrum service agreement.
I hear second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the county judge to sign the revised spectrum service agreement, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Owen. Item number 13. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the IT department to purchase reporting software for Spelman.
So this is the one, I'm going to be tabling this one until we can come back at a further time and get all the quotes kind of better aligned and all that.
Okay. So number 13 has been tabled. Thank you, Owen. Okay. This brings us to item number 14. And let me say this. Our county attorney, Mr. Matt Mills, who's in the audience and Mike for him to stay here, has addressed items number 14, 15, and 16 in a legal memorandum that he has submitted to all of the commissioners and myself discussing these three items. And I'd like to take the opportunity right now to just read what Matt Mills has said and see if we need to ask.
Wait a minute, Judge. This is my agenda items. And frankly, I put this on the agenda. And based on item number four, where we have already dispersed the rest of the ARPA money, this is pretty much moot. So I'm pulling 14, 15, and 16.
Well, thank you, Mr. Eagle. I appreciate that. I really do appreciate it. Okay. So that's good. So 14, 15, and 16 have been pulled. And we had two speakers lined up to speak on it. So we're moving right along here today. Good. This brings us to number 17. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the TCDRS plan required rate or elected rate and authorize the county judge to sign the TCDRS plan agreement for calendar year 2024. Ms. Melissa Welber.
So I asked Melissa in our TCDRS rep to put both these options here so we could discuss the options. As you may recall, when this court authorized the payment of 1.5 million to go towards the TCDRS debt, I made a statement that that would be, that we would be overfunded as there was only, as we were only owed a little over 1 million on our TCDRS debt. There was some disagreement on that point, so I did do some research on that. And as you can see from this report, you might need to scroll down. But as you can see from this report, we have an overfunded balance now of about $373,000. I also confirmed that all prior COLA, COLA is a cost of living adjustment. All of those have been paid in full. And again, thanks for, as, as the judge said a minute ago, this goes to the work of our county auditor in making sure that we allocate our funds from excess sales tax or other things to ensure that we are properly funding our, our TCDRS retirement. So with that said, we have no more outstanding debt on COLA. So for the first time in a long time, we have an option to do the lower required rate, which is, if you want to scroll down, Drew or Owen, that would be great, rate of 9.76 or the higher elected rate of 10.06. While the 2023-2024 budget was built on 10.06, we can decide to pay the elected rate, which is 9.76, which would actually have a positive impact on the budget. Let's take an example. With using today's payroll that's on today's court of 1.2 million, that would be a difference of $3,600. But over a year, be closer to $100,000. Now, if we proactively choose to pay the higher amount than required, we are hedging against a future year of loss investment. So with TCDRS, if they have a bad year, we've hedged against that. So we're building up a buffer. However, remember, we still have almost $400,000 as a cushion for that and possible future excess sales tax that could be applied to it if needed. I just wanted to put it on here so that the court could make an informed decision and decide which way we wanted to go. So with that, I'll just open it up to discussion. Melissa?
Well, do you have anything to say? I'd like Becky to address this. I mean, you've always done this, and that's why we are, the county is in such good shape. And we are current with everything with this. I mean, this is...
So when I talked with Erica at TCDRS, the only rate that I was given was a 10.06. There was nothing else discussed or talked about. That's what we budgeted. So you've got it in your budget. I would see no reason to do anything different for the main reason, if they have a bad year, and they have, we had to come up with an additional $200,000 just right off the bat. Other counties who were not in the shape we're in, a small county that I know of, I talked to her, Ellen, and she said, we had to come up with a million dollars. They have a bad year, you're in trouble. This is a minor difference. Stay ahead of the game, guys. Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
No, sir, I do not. It's entirely up to the court which rate you would like to go with in the plan year, calendar year of 2024.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Commissioner, have anything to add or say? Guess not.
All right, so I would really like to hear some discussion on this before we decide which, which way to go.
I do have a question, because that's the budgeted rate of 10.06, and then we have the 9.76. Down at the bottom, it's the same. What am I, what am I missing there?
Did I notice that I don't know what, why this is not different? Again, you have budgeted, I've budgeted 10.06. So you're filling that in.
So because we have, and we're overfunded, we don't have... In the past, our required rate was higher because we had an unfunded debt that we were continuing to pay. So we were having to pay on that as well. But now we don't have that. Now we have an overfunded amount. So that allows our required rate to be less than if we wanted to elect to pay a little bit more and, and continue to build that buffer, the overfunded amount, as Becky said, in case there's a bad year. So, but, I mean, we do have options. We, we budgeted 5.5 million in sales tax this year. Last year, sales tax came in at 7.1. So, I mean, if we were exactly the same in sales tax in this current year as we were last year, we would have quite a bit of buffer to apply to anything that we, you know, any TCDRS debt or other debt. So, I mean, those are just things to think about. I just wanted us to, you know, know what the facts are and make an informed decision.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to table this. And let me have a little bit more time to look into, get the right numbers, or is this something that we've got to do now?
This is actually due on the 15th. The 15th, yes.
Okay, all right. Does it, I'm sorry, does it have to, do we have to make a decision today?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Once the court decides which elected or required rate they want to go with, then I will create the plan. And then the TCDRS will send me a document that is required to have the judge's signature on it, which has to be done by December 15.
Well, I'll make the motion then, that we approve the TCDRS plan required rate or elected rate and authorize the county judge to sign the TCDRS plan agreement for the calendar year 2024.
Which right?
Which one?
Which right? The budgeted rate is 10.06.
10.06.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number eighteen, discuss and take appropriate action to purchase of furniture and other related fixtures and/or equipment to allow dispatch department to update its ECC work area not to exceed $145,000 from Fund 55. Sheriff?
Judge, commissioners, we've been having a lot of problems with the furniture that's in there now. And then I was informed, we had another motor go out yesterday. So we're going to start having more failures, most likely, just as stuff wears out. So the problems that we've had with broken tabletops that don't go up and down, we've propped stuff up with two before's and done a lot of different things. The consoles that we have in there now don't have places to put the wires. So people trip on the wires and accidentally unplug equipment. It's up on the screen now, some of the problems that we have. And we've tried to keep them up and wire cable tie them up and different things. But as they use that stuff, it going up and down, it, it gets broke loose and, and we have problems. So we looked into, and these were all purchased from the prison system a number of years ago. We looked at, we need to go to real approved dispatch consoles. And so they went out, looked at three different companies for bids, Russ Basset, Evans, and I can't say that last word, Sustima. So the Evans was $277,000. Sustima was $205,000. And the Russ Basset was what they liked the best. And then it was, came in at 143,882 dollars and, is that eight or six? And 60 cents, 80 cents.
Looks very NCIS here.
It's nice and clean.
Yes. You guys have mentioned especially, even with the radio project and the way we had to do everything, we have electrical pool running down.
Yeah, it looks dangerous.
And there's tripping hazards.
I don't even walk in there. I just.
Yes. Besides, there's safety issues.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we authorize the purchase of furniture and other related fixtures and our equipment to allow dispatch department to update the ECC work area not to exceed $145,000 from Fund 55.
Here's second.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to purchase furniture and other related fixtures and our equipment to allow dispatch department to update its ECC work area not to exceed $145,000 from Fund 55, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion?
One question. And we've got that, right?
Yes, we have that. And, and I was about to say, we have budgeted 1,450,000. We are spending a lot of this. I'm going to move another million dollars from Fund 10 into 55 because y'all are, we're just three months in the year. So I'm going to move that. So for the remainder of the year, you will have sufficient budget to purchase other items because we're running low in it now, and that's why I budget that.
Good. Okay. Any further discussion? If not that, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you all. Y'all do a good job. Okay. Item number nineteen, discuss and take appropriate action on roofing projects at the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, Annex III, and Heart Rehab Building and repair current issues not to exceed $11,000. Mr. Jay Riley.
Thank you all. Good morning.
Get in the mic, would you?
Oh, I'm sorry. We had the last large rainstorm, which we got approximately 12 to 15 inches of rain. We had some leaks. We had some leaks on this building. We had some leaks at Annex III and the Heart Rehab Center. The damage is minimal. We lost ceiling tiles, but we also learned some things in the process. So I reached out, Melissa and I reached out to the insurance, let them know. And they came out and they took a look at it. They said, really, you know, the only damage is interior damage, like the ceiling tiles and stuff like that. And that was around $4,000 is what they estimated that at. And so, you know, our deductible's higher than that. So there's no money from the insurance, but yet we did let them know. What they did say is, what we have left and what we're asking for today is $11,000 to repair those three buildings. And that is, would be like maintenance. They're saying there's nothing wrong. We didn't have a catastrophic failure, no hail damage, no nothing like that, just a lot of water, and you probably need to do some maintenance on your buildings. That's the way I took it. So right now, we're asking, I've got all the bids here, and they total up to right under, right over, right at $11,000. I believe y'all have got all of the, I can break the buildings down per building, but, yeah, it's a total of $10,131. And of course, those are, you know, quotes and estimates.
Jay, you have that in your budget?
Well, yeah, but I'm not leaving the next guy in very good shape.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak into the mic? Go ahead, get you on record here.
Would you like to take this out of Capital Projects? I'm about to move money in there, and it will keep his budget more viable for the remainder of the year.
I think that's appropriate. I mean.
You have another question, though, right?
I do, while we're on this subject. So if y'all, some of y'all, I think, I don't know, I think all y'all were here, maybe not. Maybe you weren't commissioner.
I wasn't here. I was sitting out there.
A couple of years ago, I brought up an issue on the roof here. And, and we do have some issues we have to fix. It's not necessarily roof related. These drains, we're going to fix them with this 11,000. This roof is 17 years into a 20-year roof. So we're just about, all the granules on the roof are going away. The UV rays are starting to show the fiber in the roof material that's up there, not the metal. I'm just talking about the flat roof. I'm just talking about the, it's, for lack of a better term, it's like your shingles. It's roofing and tar. And it's getting bad. And it's getting bad, and it's not getting any better. Two years ago, I proposed to y'all that we could do a coating membrane over the roof that we currently have. The roof is still good enough to do that. If we wait too long, then it's not even worth doing that. But we can do a coating over it for $119,220. And that's not much higher than what I proposed before. I believe it was around 100, 405,000 the last time. So I'm asking the court to give it some thought. We're probably going to need to do something on this roof. I just don't want anything bad to happen to it. Do we want to go down this route, or would you like for me to go out and pursue a replacement on just the composition part of this roof?
What's the membrane, what kind of time is the membrane going to buy us? I mean, time what?
Ten years.
How many?
Ten years, unlimited. It gives you two-year workmanship. So two-year workmanship, 10-year. So that'll stretch you out another 10 years on warranty. That'll give you, now a 20-year roof will now basically be.
Thirty, almost thirty.
Twenty-seven years total. Well, what do you think's the best? Do you think that's the best way to go?
Think without.
From what, and, and by no means am I an expert on roofs, but the guys that I talk to are. I like the idea of doing the coating because it's going to give you a little bit more of a reflection. It's going to be white instead of what you've got up there right now. So you're going to get a reflection. We're going to get a little bit better on cooling and heating and stuff like that. It's going to reflect the sun. It's UV resistant. We can walk on it. We can get up there and change out air conditioning units. That was my biggest question, my biggest concern on the coating, but they assured me that would be fine. I'm fine with it. I'm fine with the coating. That'll buy you 10 more years.
The other option is, is to get an estimate on a new roof that would take us out how many years?
If you put a new roof on, you're probably going to get 20 to 25. And I don't have a price on that.
A lot more than that, but.
Yeah, I guarantee you, it'll be more.
Half a million at least.
Substantially more than the 119. What you're doing with the 119, you're doing preventative maintenance.
And if we do, if we do the 119, do the membrane, then whatever money that was going to be spent to patch up there now, you know, won't have to be spent.
It's different. It's different stuff. The patching is around the flashing and things.
The drains in the roof that are starting to separate, they're in the ceiling, actually. So we've got to fix them regardless. And that, that's not part of this 119, and a little bit of the flashing that's loose and not, I hate to say this, but every roofer finds a problem with their roof, and it's just like anybody. And they say, well, this should have been done different. This should have been done different. I've tried to mitigate that as much as I can, but we do have some issues that have to be addressed. So I will tell you this also, not trying to backtrack, but on the roof at Annex III, I've been in contact, that roof was put up three years ago. I've been in contact with that company. They're going to give me a, a pri, or not a price, but they're going to see what they can do to repair those issues from the leak. And so that money that, of that 11,000, I probably am not going to spend that. Hopefully, that's what I'm working through with the, the manufacturer right now. And if I can do that, then that money won't be spent.
Or could be put toward?
It could be put towards this 119.
Nothing set in stone at the moment, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I just met with them yesterday, as soon as I could get them out.
Do you need to come back to us with a bid for the top, for the membrane?
The membrane, we do have at 119, 220.
Oh, you got a new bid for that? Okay.
Right. I do have that bid, and that's a good bid. I just got that last week, or the first of this week. I apologize. I got it the first of this week.
Yeah, I don't think we can do anything with that today, not being on the.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so.
But what we are asking for is 11, so I can start with repairs.
Well, can we just wait until the next commissioners' court to do this on the thing? Or do you need some direction right now?
I think we've got to do this.
We need to do the repairs.
I agree.
And we can come back with the membrane.
Especially in, on this building, we need to.
Well, and I've got the heart rehab.
And the heart rehabs.
Heart rehab? Okay, so.
We've only got two issues here to address. One is the 11, not to exceed 11,000. The 11,000 to repair, you know, the three roofs. But then the second issue is the, you know, membrane for this building, you know, and that seems to be, you know, the more prudent way to go at this point. You know, go ahead and do that rather than whatever, you know, total replacement would be at this point. Because we can buy another, you know, 10 years or more, you know, we can, you know, that'll help.
That's not on the agenda for today. I don't think we can vote on that.
But I can bring it back on the 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, bring it back, yeah, do that. So this is just so, for the repair on the current issues, not to exceed $100,000.
11,000, 11,000.
You said you're going to get it all back. I've, I've got that, I still have that kind of confidence in you, Jay Riley, that you're going to do that. Okay. All right. So I hear a motion.
As I move that we approve the roofing projects for the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center Annex III and Heart Rehab Building and repair current issues not to exceed $11,000.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the roofing project at Ralph H. Walton Justice Center Annex III and a Heart Rehab Building not to exceed $11,000, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
And you'll be here on the 22nd, right? You'll be here on the 22nd, right?
On the 2nd?
22nd, at the next court. I'm just giving you.
You, oh, I'll be here. I'll be here.
Got on the 2nd.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Okay. This brings us to item number 20. Discuss, discuss Texas Government Code Section 551, et cetera, Texas Open Meetings Act, and whether an entity subject to Texas Open Meetings Act may legally adjourn into an executive session to discuss an item that is not placed on the agenda for that meeting. Commissioner Eagle, that's yours.
Yes, sir. This is just a generic, I guess, refresher course in the Open Meetings Act. Every two years, Attorney General Paxton publishes an Open Meetings Act handbook. This is the 2024 version, so it's a little ahead of the game. But I just want to look at a couple of items under the Texas Open Meetings Act to see if, to make sure that we're on the correct page. First of all, about a closed meeting. Texas Government Code 551.101 states the requirement for holding a closed meeting as follows. If a closed meeting is allowed under this chapter, a government body may not conduct the closed meeting unless a quorum of the government body first convenes in an, in an open meeting. And here's the underlying part, for which notice has been given as provided by this chapter, and during which the presiding officer publicly, one, announces that a closed meeting will be held, and two, identifies the section or sections of this chapter under which the closed meeting will be held. Well, what are the notice requirements? Because it talks about notice requirements. The act requires written notice of all meetings under 551.041 as follows. A government body shall give written notice of the date, hour, place, and subject of each meeting held by the government body. Sufficiency of notice. The notice must be sufficient to apprise the general public of the subjects to be considered during the meeting. And that cites, that particular issues or statements cite Supreme Court case, City of San Antonio versus Fourth Court of Appeals, Texas 1991. There's another case that's relevant to the Open Meetings Act, the Cox Enterprises, the Board of Trustees, Austin ISD. And the important point on the, it's a very important opinion. It's a short, four-page opinion, but it's, it's got a lot of meat and potatoes in it. But here's the page 960 of that opinion. Says, our prior judgment should have served as notice to public bodies that Open Meetings Act requires a full disclosure of the subject matter of the meetings. The act is intended to safeguard, safeguard the public's interest in knowing the workings of its government bodies. A public body's willingness to comply with the Open Meetings Act should be such that the citizens of Texas will not be compelled to resort to the courts to assure that a public body has complied. to assure that a public body has complied with its statutory duty. So, I cite these part of the code because here's a summation. If you're gonna do a closed meeting, it has to be noticed on an agenda. When you get to that agenda item in, in an open meeting, you announce that you're going into a closed meeting on that agenda item, and then you go into the closed meeting, and you cite the reasons you're going into the closed meeting, and then you come out and you act on it or not. And I put that on here just as a reminder to us about that part of the Open Meetings Act.
Anything else? Anybody have any, any other comment?
Just say that I did
You had a, Mr. Granik, Dr. Granik.
Thank you, Judge, and Commissioners. We'll echo some of the comments done in the open-mic session, which I arrived a little late for. And also to point out that we can be disagree, and without being disagreeable, I want to thank Commissioner Eagle last session for giving me the 401, 501(c) list for a group that I was with that wanted to contribute. But my point on this one is simply, there are a number of items on the agenda today, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, that eventually got withdrawn, twenty and twenty-one, that require a review from the county attorney. They're legal opinions, and I know that y'all wanna respect the considerations of the citizens who are here today. I'll try to be brief in view of that. Although, in our last commissioners' court, obviously, since a number of citizens spoke one way on an item, on how to distribute ARPA, and the court then didn't pay much attention to those citizens. But still, for respect for the time of the decisions, I noticed when we did the open-mic thing, y'all wanted to put it at the front to consider the time of the citizens who are here. I look and notice that we've certainly thinned out. So, I would like to suggest that items that require legal opinion, as items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, just be presented to the county attorney, and he may refer it to the Attorney General, rather than try to make legal decisions over which they can be decided. This, these two items seem to also be not particularly subject to the general item. And I would also like to suggest that if the court is going to go into potentially close, you know, executive session, that they move those items to the end in consideration of those executive sessions can be very long, and it's nice if those are the end, so people can hear the things that are relevant, and those items that aren't, you know, they can move on. So, my comment on this is simply, these two items may be good for reference, but take up time, as I'm taking up time, and may move to the end. So, thank you for your consideration.
Any, any other speakers on this one?
Anybody else have any comment? This is just a discussion. I know, this, this discussion here, and I really appreciate Commissioner Eagle taking up all of our times up here to educate us and philosophically tell us what's going on. This has to do with the Hospital District Board that met last week. And I just wanna remind everybody that there was special legislation that created the Hood County Hospital District and the Hospital District Board. And I wanna read a section of that legislation, specifically Section 1042.103, Management and Control of District. The management and control of the district is vested in the board, and the board has full power to manage and control the district. Kristi Massey has been on the Hospital District Board for the last seventeen years. She's been the president of the Hood County Hospital Board for the last seven years. She's the one that made the decision to go into executive session, and that's what the hospital board did. And the hospital board is composed of the four commissioners, and then four laypeople, of which, one of the four laypeople must be a doctor, either a medical doctor or a doctor of osteopathy. So, and then the county judge. So that's the nine members of the Hospital District Board. And then, when we went into executive session, two of the board members decided that that was not legal in their mind, and refused to attend and go into executive session. But we still had a quorum, and we did go into executive session. So that's the background on item number twenty. And I personally am tired of Commissioner Eagle putting stuff on this commissioners' court, like Dr. Granik has just said, to discuss stuff and give us a lecture. I am Phil Sokravki, almost opposed with everything that Commissioner Eagle does, and with a couple of other members here on this commissioners' court, as everybody here has witnessed time and time again. So I don't like being lectured to by Commissioner Eagle. And I think, and I would like for commis, for county attorney Mills to give us an opinion as to whether we can put on a county agenda for action to be taken. This is supposed to be county business, where we're to act on county business, not to sit here and listen to some commissioner's political views or his philosophical views on anything. It's county business, and I'd like for you to give us an opinion on that if we could just have to endure another lecture by anybody without it resulting in some action being taken for county business. So either you could do it, or like you suggested, Dr. Granik, maybe write the Attorney General to see if we could just put anything that a commissioner wants to on the agenda and take up everybody's time here in the county. I'm opposed to doing that.
Well, before we move on
Thank you for making my case, Judge, thank you.
I'm gonna say a few things.
That's why you practiced law for thirteen years, and I practiced law for fifty-three years, Ms. Eagle.
So, just to continue on, since he brought up the exact, that wasn't last week, it was on November seventeenth, which I declined to attend the executive session based on the Open Meetings Act. I followed up with the AG office and confirmed that the boilerplate language that exists on the bottom of that agenda only applies if, big if, it is listed on the agenda. Prior to the meeting, I had reached out to two attorneys at TAC because I was very concerned when I picked up my packet that there was going to be an executive session which wasn't listed on the agenda. As you guys know, I'm a stickler for detail. So, if that hasn't been clear, it is now. So, when I followed up, they, the attorney at TAC had some suggestions, which was, well, you could list the subject of what you were doing on the agenda, and then take action on that, and then in the next, in the next agenda item, you could then convene into executive session after you had taken that action. However, it must first be on the agenda. So, and there's a very limited number of reasons that you could go into a closed session to meet with your attorney, not any attorney that happens to be in the room, or that you may or may not anticipate hiring or retaining, but you're the attorney for the taxing entity. That is, so it has to be pending or contemplated litigation, a settlement offer, or a matter in which the duty of the, of the attorney or the government body under the Texas Disciplinary Code of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, or regarding real property purchase or exchange. And there's a few others, personnel matters, security, but nothing germane to what we were discussing or what was anticipated to be discussed in the executive session. Hiring an attorney, retaining a law firm is not covered under 551. But as I said, whatever the subject matter is that you're potentially going into executive session for must be listed on the agenda first. And there is an Attorney General Opinion GA 0511 from 2007 that says the notice of a meeting must include all subjects that a government body will discuss, including those that may be discussed in a closed meeting. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I got something to add now, we had to listen to you. So here's, here's the enforcement and remedies that are contained in Texas Government Code 551. Here's the problem if you violate the Open Meetings Act. And I haven't said anybody has. But, here's the problem if you do. And I'm sorry the judge doesn't wanna hear this. Texas Government Code 551.141 states that the action is voidable, which means if you go into an illegal session and you do something, you come out and do something, and it's not a legally called open meeting, it's a voidable act. But it ramps up. Number, Government Code 551.142 says that any interested person, any citizen is an interested person, any taxpayer, may file a mandamus or injunction action to stop this from happening again. If it, if it comes to the fact that somebody has violated the Open Meetings Act. Finally, there are also criminal penalties that are attached to this, with this statute, to an illegal meeting where a quorum is present and it's not noticed. Under 551.144, it says, A, subsection A, a member of the government body commits an offense if a closed meeting is not permitted under this chapter, and the member knowingly, knowingly calls or aids in calling or organizing the closed meeting, whether it's a special, regular, or special call closed meeting. Fine one hundred to five hundred dollars, could be thrown in county jail for one to six months. So, the reason I stood up and walked out the other day was because I deemed it, yeah, in my little pea-brain legal mind, that I can't hold a candle to the judge's stature, but I deemed it as an illegal meeting, and I stood up and walked out. And here's the final kicker, well, the next item, I'll pick up the next issue.
I just wanna also address and thank the judge for reading from the forming documents to create the Hospital District Board, but that does not absolve that district being as an entity of the state of not following the Open Meetings Act. We still must conform with the statutes.
Thank you for your legal opinion.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I do do my research, that's for sure.
Okay, this brings us to item number twenty-one. Commissioner Eagle?
Uh, this is, this is the
Elizabeth Mercer has a
I'm sorry?
We got Elizabeth Mercer.
Oh, okay, of course.
Of course, you and I are such good friends. So, I've listened to all this, and I have a real problem with the integrity of this court as it stands. And here is why. You have spoken a lot about the integrity of courts, and I am directing this to you, sir. And you have also spoken a great deal about the legalities and how you want everything to be completely legal. But based on your current legal issues with the Attorney General's office, for you to even sit on this court, every agenda item you place, every vote you make, until you are either found innocent or guilty, sir, you have no standing. So it's difficult for me to listen to you say all these things when I know that right now you have no real legal standing on this court, and you shouldn't be lecturing anybody. I'm not arguing the Open Meetings Act. I, I actually think that it's an important statute. What I am saying is, you all, you three, set a precedent. When you decided to kill the appointment of Mike Massey to the Upper Trinity Water Board, you said that it was a lame-duck court. So then you actually completely demolished that and installed Bob Lusk with your votes. So you have set a precedent for every single court to be above board, for there to be absolutely no question as to the position each person should hold. And right now, the position you have, because the Secretary of State's office agreed that the information and the investigation against you warranted Kim Paxton's office to come down and send an investigator. So I don't even understand, sir, why you're still here. I don't understand why you haven't voluntarily recused yourself until your innocence is proven or your guilt is proven. I, I, you guys are astonishing. Each and every one of you are astonishing, because when it suits you, then you scream about the integrity of the court, but when it doesn't suit you, you ignore it. So I, I am just so exhausted by you people not just doing the right thing when it's presented to you. Because you know what, Mr. Eagle, you could be completely innocent. I don't know. I know you love your grandkids, and I find it hard to believe that you would allow them to live in the front of that home because everybody kept saying, you, you know, that I was wrong, and that you really didn't live there. So I dove by out of just curiosity. The fact that it's an OTS means nothing to me.
This is, this is, this is completely out of line.
It's not okay to sit here and criticize the, the
Okay.
condition of his home.
Well, excuse me, sir, excuse me. But what I'm saying to you is, I was merely explaining to him that where he lives and how he lives doesn't matter, except that I saw the exterior of that, and because I lived in the area, the general area, I know it's dangerous. And I don't believe anyone has children to live there. So I think that, that is why everyone decided that they would take a look at it. And because that's happened, because that has happened, what is happening now is that you are lecturing all of us when you have no standing, and I wish you wouldn't. Well My time is up, but if you wanna talk to me, I'll talk to you.
I, I don't think it's fair to, to already make him guilty. That's not how our legal system works.
But that's not what I said. What I said was, whether you're proven innocent or you're proven guilty, and the reason that I decided that maybe it needed to be looked into was because I actually went and looked on my own, because I actually thought that it was nonsense. I mean
That's not the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
Well, it's, I understand that, but what I actually came through, and what I was actually talking about, was that you all are stating that you are insisting the integrity of the court be upheld at all costs, and statute is going to be upheld, and you are going to be the moral voice to make sure that everything is done exactly right. Well, but you're not doing it exactly right. So you can't have it both ways, and that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the miscellaneous.
Now, I think we got
Now we got one more.
He was on twenty-one.
She was talking about twenty-one.
Yeah, but none of us
No, she came up here to talk about everything but the two agenda items. All right, here's number twenty-one. Discuss whether a taxing entity subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act may legally adjourn into an executive session to discuss the pros and cons of ordering a voter-approved tax rate election, which would be implementation of an M and O tax rate. The reason that's on there is because this ups the ante for going into a closed session and for notice requirements because, because it's of special interest to the public. And if you And if you look at the statute and you look at the AG opinions and you look at the case law, there's a, since there, I would say that a voter-approved or tax raise that's going to require to be on a ballot for the voters to approve it is of special interest to the public. Therefore, the scrutiny should be heightened, double, more, in the open. And the public has a right to be notified with reasonable specificity of the subject matter to be considered at the meeting of the government body, particularly when the subject can be reasonably expected to be of special interest. And of course, taxing, raising a tax to the taxpayers, I would say and submit, is of special interest to the public. You don't do that in the dark. And here's something else to add on to this, since we're on it. Since this turns into a personality issue instead of what the issue is at hand, if you don't have an argument, you come attack somebody personally. That's how it works. But with that said, the day before we had this meeting, the county attorney warned them not to do it. He said, "Don't do it." He knew that, what they were going to do, and they told him what they were going to do, and they did it anyway. So what does that mean? It goes back into 551.144. A member of the government body commits an offense if a closed meeting is not permitted under the chapter, which it wasn't, because it wasn't on the agenda, and the member knowingly calls or aids in calling or organizing said meeting. So when they had the county attorney tell them not to do it, and they did it anyway, that puts them into knowingly territory. And they can blub we ain't all they want about this, but that's what happened. And that wasn't what I was going to get into today. But I didn't bring it up. And as far as anything else is concerned, prove it.
I wish to say something else. Going into executive session, no member of the public is allowed into executive session. Of course, if there's going to be a tax of any kind, it's got to be voted on by the citizens of Hood County, and nobody knows that more clearly than I, and I am all for that. So that's what I'm for. I want to point out that everybody in the, on the board was giving notice of what was to be done into executive session. And although our county attorney is the county attorney, he is not the attorney for the Hood County Hospital District. Okay? That's clear. So he has no authority to tell President Christie Massey what to do or cancel anybody that's scheduled to come up or anything else in our meetings. I've just read to you the enabling legislation that established the Hood County Hospital District, and that full authority and control is vested in the Hood County Hospital District Board. And Christie Massey made the decision, been on the board for 17 years, there is the same notice that's put out every time that we could go into executive session. And I just want to add that what was discussed, had been discussed at the four previous hospital board meetings, that all, both Dave Eagle and Commissioner Samuelson were present when the discussion of a hospital tax was brought up and discussed. So...
That was at an open session.
It was in an open session, and it was not on the agenda. It was not on the agenda, Commissioner Samuelson, and you participated, because we knew what an emergency situation it was, and everybody was trying to get, hey, what is it going to take legally to put the issue in front of the voters of Hood County? And finally, I had found somebody, and every member of the board was invited to see if they could find an attorney that specialized in that, since the Hood County Hospital District had reduced the hospital tax to zero. Parker County did the exact same thing that Hood County did, when they gave the land and the building to a, created a hospital district, and then it was leased to a for-profit hospital, with the exception that Parker County kept a hospital tax. So for the last 26 years, when Hood County did not have a hospital tax, Parker County did. So right now, Parker County has a $43 million, as I understand it, $43 million for the indigent care for their citizens. Where here in Hood County, we have like $3 million, and we spend it at the rate of about $600,000 per year. So we are put in a situation where...
I want to call a point of order. This is not on the agenda. Point of order, this is not on the agenda.
So there it is. And I agree with you. Let's go on to the consent agenda. If you want to hear something, let's do it, folks. I just wish we could have the same rules in a civil trial that we do have in this commission.
Before we...
Me too.
Before we...
That would be nice, wouldn't it?
Before we leave 21, I still have something to say on 21.
You're out of order.
I have something to say on, I haven't been able to speak on this agenda item. Okay. This is agenda item 21. As I stated earlier, there are very limited and narrow allowable exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. Discussion hiring an attorney or getting advice from an attorney on the best way to go about ordering a voter-approved tax rate election is not one of them. In fact, any discussion on taxes or tax rates should be ultra-transparent, because it impacts the voters and their pocketbooks. But again, first and foremost, it must be, the subject must be on the agenda. A government body cannot convene in executive session on an item that is not listed on the agenda. And as I stated just a minute ago, the governing documents do not absolve the hospital district from ignoring the Open Meetings Act. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, now let's go into the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything or question anything on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda stated.
Second.
Motion made by Lieutenant Wilson to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, no personnel changes? Okay.
Road ops.
Okay. Now, we're down to you, Ms. Selenaus.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Selenaus, road ops. Yes, sir.
Judge Commissioners, have on the agenda to discuss and then take appropriate action on accepting the following roadway in the Rancho Brazos development onto the county road system. Rancho Brazos is in precinct three. Back in 2020, Habitat for Humanity had started upgrading this cul-de-sac, and then in 2021, they actually put two-course chip seal on it, two years later. We're not looked at it. It needs no repairs. It's in good shape. Road operations recommends accepting the Canyon Road lateral cul-de-sac at the 3,700 block of Canyon Road.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the following roadway in the Rancho Brazos development into the county road system, Canyon Road lateral cul-de-sac, 3,700 block, 165 feet.
Your motion made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the roadway in Rancho Brazos development, Canyon Road lateral cul-de-sac, 3,700 block, 165 feet. Do I hear a second?
Second.
She beat me.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Donald Lindy. Mr. Clinthead, I remember on a set of public hearings for the replat of Summerlin Phase One lots 24R-1R and 26R-1R.
Staff recommends sitting the public hearing for January 23, 2024.
January the 23, 2024. Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for the replat of Summerlin Phase One lots 24R-1R and 26R-1R for January 23, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrew to accept the public hearing for January 23, 2024. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Public hearing to discuss, consider taking appropriate action on the updates to our provisions to Section 1 Development Permanent Regulations, and consider options to track for the revisions to Section 6.11. So at this time, at 11:18, we're going to convene into a public hearing. Mr. Clinthead.
I presented these two options to you at the last court. Option A, it's got a lot of hurdles, gets you to the same spot, it's basically going to make you, we're going to make sure none go in the water quality district and you have adequate water and sewer. It's just, it's going to be an investment if you go with option A, because they're going to, the presentation's going to be more in-depth. They're going to have engineer, surveyor, stuff like that. Option B, just redoes Section 611 as it stands and takes out everything we cannot do, and then breaks it down into subsections that was never broke down into subsections before, and just simplifies it.
What do you think is, the people that come up here wanting development?
Well, to me, the option B is, you know, it's simplified. It's very simple. It's going to end up at the same place. As a court, y'all being, all the trouble we caught before is why road option A, it's going to require an investment for the people.
When you say investment, what do you mean?
They're going to spend some money to have the plans drawn up. But option B is going to be this, you're going to have the same end result. It's all about water and sewer.
Okay. There aren't a public hearing, didn't we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Is anybody have any, does public hearing say anything about this item?
Option A is based on...
Raise your hand.
Be careful.
Option, option A is, it's like an option here. Option A is based off a different statute. It's based off of manufactured home rental community statutes, so it just allows us to have more, you know, more detailed plans that we're not allowed to under the regular local government code.
So when I looked at these two options, you know, we talked about it a week or so ago, that, you know, pulling it out into a separate document, but I, I thought that the words would be the same, the regulations would be the same, just in a different format, and that's not the case.
I wouldn't have them as two different options if they were the same.
Well, I mean, one is included in altogether, and then one is pulled out into a separate document, but they're not...
Option A takes 611 out and tells you to see Section 4. If we went with option A, it creates a new section.
Yeah, a new section that's completely different. So one of the things I noticed in option B, if you do, if that's the way we go, the very last thing on the grandfather clause, it says all RV parks, but there's no definition of RV park, so we might want to correct that.
It's defined in the definitions.
I didn't find it. If you can point me to the page.
Are you talking about B or A?
B. RV park, it's got, okay, recreational vehicle, maybe you just need to put in parentheses there, RV park. But that's talking about the actual vehicle, not the park. So we don't have a definition for RV parks, so to speak.
Section 611A, short-term rental community recreational vehicle parks, which is abbreviated of an RV park, it defines it right there.
Where's that?
It's the very first sentence of Section 611. Except we redefined it to be short-term rental, because little cabins and everything else are like the TCQ, but same as an RV park.
Okay, pass the definitions. Okay, it's just not in the definitions, it's in 6.11. So maybe, I mean, the word RV park's not there, so I think to be consistent, it either needs to say in parentheses, RV park there, or back here in grandfather, it needs to spell out, I don't know, maybe ask Matt, but if I was reading this as a potential RV park person...
My question is, to make this change, do I need to go back and run another ad in the paper and have another public hearing?
Well, I don't even know if that's the one we're going with, so we'll just hold that.
Y'all want, y'all want some speakers? I'll take a position, and then there's four or five that can come up and argue against it. I don't want any speakers, so I'm not going to say.
Okay, so what would, surely we wouldn't have to have that re-noticed just to make an amendment to the...
Y'all could pin it in. Y'all could approve to make that amendment, and I'll change it before I post it on the website. But y'all going to have to pin it in.
What's the amendment?
To put RV, put RV park in parentheses next to the definition.
So it's consistent with the grandfather clause.
You'll have to pin it in on the one that y'all signed to give to Katie.
So Matt's looked at both of these from a legal perspective, and...
Matt and Jay both, they lean towards option B, like me.
The issues that we had with the prior one are resolved by this. There's nothing in here that is conflicting with state law?
No, we took all that out. Appreciate the work you guys have done on that. That's been a bit of a, been a bit of a thorn, so...
Mr. Mills, did you have to run that to make that slight revision or addition?
I don't think so, because the full body text was not in the paper. It was just that we were going to have the hearing to do this, right?
They can just pin it on that, right?
So, I mean, the public wasn't apprised of the full-blown document in the first place, so they just know that if they're interested, they can show up here and discuss and do whatever, so I don't have a problem with making a slight change.
But they can pin it and be the one they sign and be pinned in on?
Yeah, they can interlineate whatever you want to call it, and then just put that on the website. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, do you want to make that motion? Make your statement.
Are we still in a public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Recoveen into Commissioner's Court.
Any other questions or comments? If not, at 11:25, we went back from the public hearing into Commissioner's Court. Commissioner Samuelson, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I will move that we adopt option B of the new development guidelines with the change in paragraph P to add RV park, or recreational vehicle park, or do you want, well, let me start over. Do you want it to be back in 611 where you want it to change, or in the grandfather clause?
Either one.
Okay. Then I think it'd be easier to change it back here. Okay, so then...
I'll wait, when I get the signed copy back from Katie, then I'll change it on the website.
So I'm, okay, I'll restate the motion. So I'll make the motion that we adopt option B of the Hood County Development Guidelines and Regulations with the change that in paragraph P, we call out recreational vehicle parks and then in parentheses, RV park.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt option B with the change regarding RV park.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Clint, thanks for getting trudging through this.
Yes, thank you, Clint.
Did we ever close a public hearing?
We did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries five to zero. Becky Kidd.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, today we have invoices in the amount of $632,223.33. Our office has reviewed all these invoices, and we... Our office has reviewed all these invoices, and we recommend payment.
Your motion paid bills?
I got one question that may lead into the second one. We've got Hood County Appraisal District check for $178,964. How many of those, how many times do we pay the HCAT?
Four times a year, and we pay it in December for January for that, that is their first quarter, our second quarter.
So between seven and eight hundred thousand, we pay to HCAT?
Yes, we do.
So I stand by going to the, advocating for the people I did advocate for to be on that board. Thank you.
Your motion paid the bills?
Pay the bills for $632,223.33.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the invoices of $632,223.33, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Motion carries unanimous, please.
Thank you. Kidd, out.
She's out.
Kid out.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky.
Adjournment.